I will call to order our regular city council meeting, which is being held virtually via webex of March 9th, 2021. And I'll call our meeting to order. So the first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone can please take, put their camera on if possible and join me and also take yourself off of mute and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic we stand. One nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. The next item is the open forum. I will pass it to Assistant Winn to see if anybody is here for the open forum and to also explain to folks how people can call in.
Thank you, Mayor. We also, we highly encourage residents to participate in our open forums. You can call directly in live to the meeting at 612-861-0651. And you'll be connected to myself and put through to the meeting to supply your comments. You can also contact me ahead of time if you would like your comments read. You can email those comments to kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. Or you can call my office phone at 612-861-9711. Again, if you'd like to participate live, you can call now at 612-861-0651. I currently do not have anybody on the line, though.
All right. Thank you so much for explaining the process. We will wait just a minute or two to see if anyone ends up calling in. Okay. Has anybody called in yet, Assistant Winn? All right. Thank you so much. So seeing as we have nobody on the line for the open forum, I will move to the next item and close the forum. And that is the approval of the minutes of the City Council Work Session of February 23rd, 2021. The City Council Meeting of February 23rd, 2021. The Special City Council Work Session of March 2nd, 2021. And the Special City Council Work Session of March 4th, 2021.
Councilmember Wayland, no moves.
Councilmember Supple, second.
Thank you. The minutes have been moved by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
And Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved. Hello? Oh, I don't know if someone, all right. I will move us to our next item. We have one presentation today, and that is the proclamation declaring March 9th, 2021 Tibet Day. So we do have representatives here from the Tibetan American Foundation of Minnesota. So I'm wondering if they can just introduce themselves briefly, and what I'll do is read the proclamation. And then I always appreciate when the representatives from TAFM can just share a little bit about why this is so important to the Tibetan community, but also a little bit more about the Tibetan community in Richfield, because we do have the second largest population of Tibetan community members in Minnesota. So I'll invite the representatives from TAFM to just unmute themselves and put themselves on camera if possible and just introduce themselves to the group.
Can anybody hear me?
Yep, hi.
My name's Tenzin Tangsong. I'm the current board member of Tibetan American Foundation of Minnesota, and I'm also the resident of Richfield for over twenty-some years.
Thank you for coming, Tenzing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Were there other folks from the group on the line?
Actually, we have eight or nine people who'd like to join the meeting. But you know, maybe due to technical difficulties, it's a different webex, you know.
Okay. Thank you so much for sharing that. So what I'll do is I'll read the proclamation and then maybe we can see if anyone is able to join us after I read the proclamation. All right. So whereas on March 9th, 2021, Tibetans will gather in their host countries to commemorate the sixty-second anniversary of the Tibetan national uprising against the occupation of Tibet and to honor more than a million Tibetans who have died in this struggle. And whereas the occupation and ongoing suppression of human rights and freedom in Tibet and the continuous degradation of culture, religion, economic, and the annihilation of the Tibetan people's identity should be a concern for all. And whereas Tibetan Buddhism and its spiritual leader in exile, His Holiness, the Fourteenth Dalai Lama, are recognized for their teachings on compassion, forgiveness, and tolerance. And whereas the Tibetan American Foundation of Minnesota was founded in 1992 and has over 5,000 Tibetan community members, many of whom live in the city of Richfield, is committed to promoting and preserving the Tibetan culture, heritage, and religion. Whereas it is only fitting that we affirm the determination of the Tibetan people in Tibet and in exile to retain their heritage and protect it from destruction against overwhelming odds through nonviolent and peaceful means. Now, therefore, I, Maria Regan Gonzalez, Mayor of the city of Richfield, on behalf of the city of Richfield City Council, do hereby proclaim March 9th, 2021 as Tibet Day in the city of Richfield. In the city of Richfield. And call on all the people in Richfield to observe this day with appropriate programs, activities, ceremonies, and continue to support our Tibetan community throughout the year. Proclaimed this ninth day of March, 2021. So this is the fourth year that we have had this proclamation in partnership with the Tibetan community, and usually it is one of the best council meetings of the year where we have so many Tibetan community members come and show their support in this. And then we also have students, a lot of times, that will come and talk about what it means to be a Tibetan student in Richfield and how important it is to them to be able to express and preserve their culture, their flag here in our own community. A lot of our neighbors, you can see the Buddhist prayer flags outside of the homes when you're walking your dog or walking around the community. And we have a lot of our Tibetan community members are frontline workers. Right now, a lot of community members work in healthcare. We have nurses, folks in different healthcare facilities, and a lot of small businesses as well. So we're extremely appreciative of their work in our community. And it's always a joy to be able to proclaim this day because we know that it is extremely important to our residents. So I'll invite Tenzing or any other of the group members, if they want to just share anything additional and to thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mayor Maria Gonzalez and City Council members. My name is Tenzin Tangsong, and I am the current board member of the Tibetan American Foundation of Minnesota. On behalf of the Tibetan community, I want to say that we are truly blessed to have the support from our local officials. It says on the proclamation, this is the sixty-second year since Tibetan inside Tibet at the peaceful protest against the Chinese for the illegal occupation of Tibet. We are thankful for the city of Richfield for recognizing the Tibetan cause and proclaiming today as Tibet Day. Thank you so much with the Tibetan scarf. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tenzing, and thank you to all the other Tibetan American Foundation of Minnesota members who are here tonight, and hopefully we can celebrate in person next year. But we appreciate your leadership and your contributions to our community, and we're always very happy to support this proclamation every single year. I don't know if there's any questions or comments from other council members on the proclamation. No? All right. Well, thank you so much, Tenzing, and thank you, everyone, from TAFM for coming. And we appreciate you, your presence tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Hayford O'Leary, move approval.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary to move the agenda and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item is a consent calendar, which is read by City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action is necessary on these items. On tonight's consent calendar is item A, consider a resolution requesting an advance payment of 2021 through 2025 municipal state aid, street funds, to collect funds available from the completion of an eligible past project. Item B, consider the approval of a resolution of support for MnDOT's Infrastructure for Rebuilding America or Infra grant application for projects one and two of the I-494, US 169 to MSP Airport Vision. Item C, consider approval of a first reading of an amendment to the city zoning code that would allow for slightly larger garage structures if an accessory dwelling unit is attached in the single-family residential districts. Item D, consider the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on March 23rd, 2021 to consider the issuance of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday license with outside service and an optional 2:00 AM closing for Pizza Luce, doing business as Pizza Luce, located at 866 Street West. Item E, consider the adoption of resolutions granting subdivision waivers for property owned by the Richfield HRA, 6600 Logan Avenue South and 6600 Newton Avenue South. And I submit all of these items for your consideration as part of the consent.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez.
Councilmember Supple, I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Councilmember Troutman, second.
Thank you. Approval of the consent calendar has been made. The motion has been made by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Are there any questions or comments from council members on the consent calendar? Councilmember Supple and then Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to comment on item C. I'm pleased to see that we're moving forward so that we can maybe have more of the accessory dwelling units. And I was also really thrilled to see that there were solar panels on it. So that kind of goes along with what we've been doing with sustainability. Thank you.
My item was also about the ADU ordinance, and I imagine we'll have, I assume the second reading will not be on the consent calendar, so we may be discussing it at our next meeting. But I was just curious, process-wise, it seems like we've only had one so far. This, the second one came to us and doesn't work with our code, so we're revising it to fit this one. Is there any general, like, we should look at it to make more than two? Or are we just kind of like open to changing it as needed when we actually get applications like this?
Yeah, I'd ask Community Development Director John Stark to answer the question if he can.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Yeah, we, we were surprised that we're not getting more. And so when we've had people express interest and ultimately not go with one, we followed up with them to ask them what the obstacles were. Most of the time, the obstacles haven't been our code. It's just been their, you know, their lifestyle and things in their life maybe changed or weren't exactly like they thought they were going to be. Almost all of the ADUs we've worked with folks on have been related to a relative. I would say two-thirds of them were for parents, and a third of them were for adult children. But yet, we, we've asked them what the obstacles were. Thus far, this is the only physical change that we've come up with to meet the obstacles that we've heard from people. But we're, we're going to keep working at it. We would like to see this successful. And so if you hear of anything or know of anything, we've also, there's like an ADU expert in the Twin Cities. I can't remember the organization he's with now. I believe it's Minnesota Housing. We've followed up with him in the past. So, and we will have more comments to make at the second reading as well. One of our housing specialists or our housing manager is a little more versed at it than I am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stark. Yeah, I think this is, this is great. It's a step in the right direction, and I share Councilmember Supple's enthusiasm for just seeing this project.
Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to highlight, I know we've done some communications about it. Some of the county commissioners have talked about it. But just wanted to highlight with the point B that folks who are following and interested in the 494 project should watch. We just had a work session update on it, or you can reach out to any of us on the council. We're happy to share. But still, still a couple of years out till any construction, but they are moving ahead with the project that includes, would start with some of the 35W interchange, the flyover ramp that's been proposed, as well as some of the bridges on Richfield's south side across 494, including something I know some of the residents in my ward are really excited about, the Chicago Avenue pedestrian bridge that's been proposed. So much more to come on that as we get more specific details, but just excited to see that that's moving ahead and excited to support the, the grant proposal, which is the specific thing on the agenda tonight. But if folks are interested in more, we just had a work session with a fuller update.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Any other comments on the consent calendar? All right. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote? Hi, Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote? I think you're still on mute.
I believe she had to step away. My apologies.
Okay.
So I will try and get through with you guys. So Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
And Councilmember Troutman. We have five ayes.
Thank you so much, Analyst Winn. The consent calendar has been approved. Now, I was informed by Analyst Winn that we did have somebody who was trying to get into the open forum, but was not able to get through. So I just wanted to go to City Attorney Tejen and just ask, in terms of process, can I just open it back up and we can take the, the resident's call? Or is there a formal process to do that?
Mayor and council, that, that's really up to the council. You could, you could do it now if you have consensus from the group. Otherwise, you could wait until the end of your agenda. But you may not want to make the resident wait either. So that's really up to you as a group.
I see two head mads. Is it okay for folks, for council members, great to take the call now? All right. All right, Analyst Winn, could you please place the resident through that was trying to get through to the open forum?
Yes. Thank you very much for making the time. I will put him through, so give me just a moment.
Good evening. I heard a click of the council call-in line. Hi, thank you. Welcome. I just wanted to quickly just invite, say hello, and also just let you know for the public forum, we do allow folks to speak for up to three minutes. And then also, if you could please state your name and your address, so we know who's speaking.
Okay, Paul Webster. Paul Webster, and my address is 3782 170th Street Southwest, Prior Lake, Minnesota, 55372.
Thank you, Paul. Go ahead with your comments.
I had talked to the mayor on, quite extensively, on March 1st about an old city ordinance regarding hours of operation for a billiards club. And the current city ordinance reads 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And I would like to ask for an amendment on that, if possible, if the council would consider it. The hours proposed are 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM, four days a week, and then Friday and Saturday, from 24 hours, if possible. And we've been working with a landlord in Richfield on opening up a 6,000-square-foot place, non-alcoholic, billiards club, I guess. And if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask, I guess. That's about all I have to comment.
Thank you so much for calling in, Paul. And I did forget to mention, so the public forum in the beginning of our meeting, it is not necessarily for discussion, but it is for folks to come and kind of just share their perspective, their opinions, if they have comments, questions, or complaints. But what we do do is, you know, we will, we have your information, and staff will be following up with you within the next week.
Okay.
And I will share that, you know, after you and I spoke, I did also follow up, and that is some, we are having discussions internally. So I appreciate you for calling. I don't know if there's any other comments you would like to add before you end.
Sure. You know, we had one in Bloomington before. We lost our lease for 10 years. We lost our lease to Tuesday morning, unfortunately, and we didn't have any problems. Just unfortunate, we lost our lease, but it is what it is. So that's all I have to say. That's it, I guess.
Great. Thank you so much for coming and sharing your public comments. And like I said, we will have staff following up with you after tonight.
Okay. And you have my email address and phone number?
You know, actually, I have your phone number, but could you please share your email address? Oh, we have it. Never mind. Sorry, our director. We have it. So thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
You too. Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Analyst Winn, for letting us know that we did have someone on the line who wanted to speak. So I will close the forum portion of our meeting again. And then the next item after our consent calendar is number, item number five, and that goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Mayor Regan Gonzalez. Item number five is a public hearing and second reading of transitory ordinance providing funding for certain capital improvements from the special revenue fund. As part of the capital improvement budget and annual city budget process, certain special revenue funds are allocated each year to fund capital projects identified through the budget process. At the February 9th, 2021 city council meeting, the council approved the first reading providing for the expenditure of funds from the special revenue fund for certain capital improvements. The planned expenditures are as follows. $50,000 for major park maintenance projects and fence repair. $15,000 for community center Woodlake building repair. $15,000 for Augsburg Park play equipment. $90,000 for Christian Park play equipment. $90,000 for Fremantle Park play equipment. $30,000 for Madison Park tennis court rebuild. $35,000 for outdoor pool liner repair. $125,000 for Veterans Park parking lot. And $50,000 for Woodlake Nature Center building preliminary design. Also at the February 9th, 2021 city council meeting, the council approved an additional $50,000 for preliminary design of the new Woodlake Center, Nature Center building. This additional $50,000 will be reflected in the 2021 revised budget. The source of special revenue funds are profits derived from the city liquor store operation. These profits are transferred to the Liquor Contribution Special Revenue Fund. Before the funds within the special revenue fund can be used for the identified capital projects, the city charter requires that a transitory ordinance be used to authorize the expenditure of the funds. In addition, the ordinance process allows for public input through a public hearing. Did staff have anything else they would like to add?
No, no, I think you covered it.
All right. Thank you. Then, Madam Mayor, I would like to open the public hearing. Assistant Winn is, can you reread the phone numbers for us, please, for citizens or residents that would like to call in? Thank you.
Of course. Thank you, Councilmembers Supple. We encourage residents to participate live in our public hearings, and you can call in now at 612-861-0651. You can also participate in public hearings by having your comments read, and you can send them ahead of time before meetings to kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. Or you can call my office at 612-861-9711. I currently do not have anybody on the line for public hearing.
All right. So wait for a few minutes to see if any residents call in. Assistant Winn, has anyone else called in? Then I would move to close the public hearing.
Councilmember Troutman, second.
Thank you. The public hearing has been closed.
All right. I, oh, go ahead.
Do we need to do the roll call vote for that, Analyst Martinez-Govina? Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The public hearing has been closed. Go ahead, Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. I would move to approve the second reading of the transitory ordinance. Providing for the expenditures of funds from the special revenue fund for certain capital improvements.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second that.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Are there any comments or questions on the item from council members? Councilmember Wayland.
Uh, just a quick highlight or underscore of the fact that this is coming from our liquor store process and so. Uh, never, never want to encourage people to go buy more alcohol than you would normally. But when you do buy it, go buy it at Richfield stores that you're helping our park. So would continue to encourage people to make a point of doing that.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Other comments or questions from council members? All right, Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman.
Aye.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. Uh, this item is a public hearing in consideration of the approval for a new on sale wine and three point two percent malt liquor license. With outside services for Moss Isley Cantina LLC doing business at Sandy's Tavern. And located at sixty six twelve Penn Avenue South. On December twenty eighth, twenty twenty, the city received application materials for new on sale wine and three point two percent. Malt liquor licenses with outside service for Moss Isley Cantina LLC doing business at Sandy's Tavern located at sixty six twelve. Penn Avenue South. Sandy's Tavern will be operating in the city under new ownership. All required information and documents have been received. All licensing fees have been paid. The public safety background investigation has been completed. The results of that investigation are summarized in an attachment to the report. Public Safety Director has reviewed the background investigation report. There is nothing in the report that would cause the Public Safety Director to recommend denial of the requested licenses. Does staff have anything to add before I open the public hearing?
Uh, Madam Mayor and council members, I don't. This is, you know, anytime we have a liquor establishment. Go through ownership change. Our ordinance requires a new application and. We don't have any issues with it. We're excited to have Sandy's still, still with us and have them moving forward.
Thank you. Okay, with that, Madam Mayor, I'd like to open the public hearing. And Assistant Winnis, if you could again read out those phone numbers.
I'd love to. Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. And we highly encourage residents to participate in our public hearings live during our meetings. You can call the number of six one two eight six one zero six five one. Where you can be patched through live to the meeting to supply your comments. You can also contact me before meetings if you would like your comments read. You can send those comments to K W Y N N. At richfieldmn.gov. Or you can call my line directly to six one two eight six one nine seven one one. And I currently do not have anybody on the line.
I don't wait a full minute. All right, was somebody called? Okay, with that, I will move that we close the public hearing.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary has made the motion to close the public hearing and it's been seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The public hearing has been closed.
All right, I will move that we approve the issuance of a new on sale wine at three point two percent malt liquor license. With outside service for Moss Isley Cantina LLC doing business at, doing business at Sandy's Tavern.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Are there any comments or questions from council members on the item? Councilmember Wayland.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank, I believe the, the two business owners are here. Wanted to thank you for, for coming and representing yourself. Was wondering, I know some, some items like this to give the owners a chance to speak and was wondering if that'd be appropriate. Or if they had any comments they'd like to share with us since they're here.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. I was just gonna ask the same thing. So would anyone like to share or to speak or from Sandy's at all? You don't have to either.
Yeah, um, I'd just like to thank you all for granting us the license. I, we just took over operations in December and we've had the community really embrace us. And we're happy to keep the legacy going. So thank you.
Thank you. I also just want to acknowledge this is one of a couple businesses I've heard from customers of with some frustration about our timing for this. So thank you for your patience. I understand we are looking into this in general, but I'm, I'm glad that you'll be moving forward.
Um, yeah, i- is there a timeframe you can expect to actually utilize the license that's just been granted?
Um, staff, could you speak to that?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, so with the approval going through the council tonight, uh, there's a document that we need to send to the state in the morning. And as I understand, processing is going pretty quickly. I can call the state and find out, but it's usually a couple days.
Awesome.
Thank you, Councilmember Chapman.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, to say, uh, welcome to our, to our new business owners. And we, we appreciate that. And I, I think people don't always appreciate all the skill it takes to own and run a, run a restaurant. From the, the artistic vision for the, the food to managing everything. And having your art be produced in the form of a high volume product. That, that, that has to be very customer service sensitive and in the middle of pandemic. Um, so hats off to you guys. We're so glad as a someone who's lived for decades in the, the neighborhood. We're just so glad that you guys are stewards of a, a center of our community that's been there for a lot of years. And so, um, congratulations and, and we're glad you guys are, are moving forward.
Thank you, Councilman.
Absolutely. I'd like to just echo that same warm welcome. We're excited to have you here. We're excited to have your support in continuing. Sandy's, it is a staple in our community. And thank you for showing up tonight as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from folks? All right, Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. Thank you for joining us tonight. The next item on our agenda will go to Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this item is to consider the appointment of the city advisory boards and commissions. Uh, terms of several of these board and commission members expired on January thirty first of twenty twenty one. Uh, there were also some resignations, so there are midterm vacancies to fill. Uh, terms for these boards and commissions are three years and the, uh, full agenda packet has the list of appointments. This is again a second round. We held the first round of, um, interviews in January on the twenty third and thirtieth. Uh, but due to some, uh, technical difficulties in the first round and some remaining openings. Uh, we held the second round of interviews on March second and March fourth. And so, um, now we will move forward with, uh, these new appointments. Uh, thanks again to everyone who has applied and it's always great to hear from folks. And, um, I feel like especially this year, there were a lot of new residents who were excited to jump in, which is great. Um, so yeah, I, I will then make the motion that we appoint members to fill the expiring or vacant terms. On city advisory boards and commissions referenced in the attached bit.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Any comments or questions from council members? All right, Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. The next item is, uh, my item, and it is a consideration of the city council confirmation of the mayor's appointment. For a housing and redevelopment authority commissioner. H R A Commissioner Pat Elliott was appointed to a five year term in twenty nineteen. With Commissioner Pat Elliott resigning from his position, the H R A position becomes vacant. The appointment is made by the mayor and then confirmed by a majority of the city council. The newly appointed commissioner will serve the remaining, the remainder of the former commissioner Pat Elliott's, um, five year term. Which expires in November twelfth, which expires on November twelfth, twenty twenty three. The next regular H R A meeting is scheduled to take place on March fifteenth, twenty twenty one. To ensure a forum at that meeting and future H R A meetings, the city council should make an appointment on March ninth, twenty twenty one. Um, so I will just say that the person, here we go, the person that we're appointing is Lee Honest Sorg to that. Uh, that spot on the H R A commission. And I will also add that we had, um, exceptional candidates that had submitted their applications. For their interest in being an H R A commissioner and we had lengthy discussions. Um, because luckily we had, you know, the privilege of choosing between many great candidates and we're really excited to welcome Lee. Um, and, you know, provide him the support he needs to get caught up on kind of the issues that the H R A has been. Working on, which a lot, which he's been following, um, and, and help him feel comfortable in his new role. So, let's see here. So I will make the motion to approve the appointment of, um. Of Lee as the H R A commissioner commencing on March ninth, twenty twenty. Oh, twenty twenty one, sorry. I think there's a typo in there. And then expiring November twelfth, twenty twenty three.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Mayor Regan Gonzalez and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Are there any comments or questions or discussion from council members? Councilmember Wayland.
Um, I'll just say briefly that it's been an honor to, to work with Lee. He and I were part. Uh, kind of both of us got our start in the community housing team, um, about three, four years ago. Uh, one of the first ways we got, or at least for me, was one of the first ways we got engaged with the city. I know he's been doing good work around housing since then. So excited to see him, uh, step up and apply for this and even more excited now to see him appointed. So welcome to Lee and we're excited to work with you going forward.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Supple.
I just wanted to add thanks to all the people that applied to all the different commissions and it's, it's really energizing. To speak with everyone from the community and hear all the ideas that are going forward. So thank you to everybody who applied.
Absolutely. Other comments or questions? All right, Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. Okay, the next item is the city manager's report with City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have a few brief reports. Um, a year ago today, hard to believe, and at the same time, it seems like it was yesterday. The city of, I'm sorry, the Bloomington Public Health, representing the cities of Bloomington, Edina and Richfield. Stood up incident command to respond to COVID nineteen. Um, also, two days later, the World Health Organization declared COVID nineteen a pandemic. Um, we are now in the vaccination phase, so that's the good news. Um, Bloomington Public Health has administered over thirty two hundred Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. To the three cities residents according to M D H priorities. And also, we are, um, we have a meeting coming up next week. Um, Bloomington Public Health, uh, the city, I'm sorry, um, with Richfield has convened it. And the school districts, um, also Partnership Academy, um, and, and Holy Angels. We also have invited several community groups and, uh, the chamber and just to improve communication. And also to build the relationships as we start, um, seeing the vaccine rollout ramp. And, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, City Manager. Any comments or questions from council members? All right, I think I'll make my comments, um, in hats off section. Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. The next items is clay, the next item is claims and payroll. Um. Councilmember Supple, did you do them recently? Okay, go ahead.
All right, I would be pleased to move claims and payroll.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been moved by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been approved. Um, the next item and our last item is hats off to hometown hits. I will pass it to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Um, I just wanted to acknowledge the, uh, Chase Bank in downtown Richfield opened today or yesterday. And I stopped by there to see the building and I want to thank my colleagues who were on the council before me for, uh, helping to make sure that the pedestrian entrance was good. It was unlocked and worked beautifully and I was told, uh, an older gentleman had already used the wheelchair lift that was included, I think, as a staff requirement to make that more accessible. So welcome to this new business and it's nice to see a nice little victory of a good development.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland.
Uh, just one thing today, I had a really great conversation recently with a, a neighbor who had just gotten their tax statement. And, um, initially was wondering like why, why city taxes had gone up, what that was for. And we had to, um, explain the, the process of assessments and how to, um, like see what was going on there. That part of it was just property values going up. Um, but also, uh, had a, a wonderful conversation where she asked like, what is this paying for? And I shared some of what our new budget included and she was really appreciative of that. Um, and shared some more ideas around, um, especially around our continued work for equity and so. And so, um, I just want to continue to encourage residents to reach out when you have questions that we, um, it's not like calling your federal congressperson where you leave a voicemail and never hear back. But, uh, we don't hear from that many people, so we will get back to you and, um, want to hear your ideas and your questions. So, um, thank you to Nancy for that conversation and to everyone else who's reached out to us before.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. Um, I have one item and, um, Mayor Regan Gonzalez and myself and the city manager and some other staff members were fortunate to be able to tour the COVID testing site that's at Creekside Community Sem- Center on ninety-eight oh one Penn. And that's part of Bloomington Public Health, which includes Richfield, Bloomington and Adina. And they talked about how easy it is to go in and have regular saliva testing. And the National Guard is helping with that, and you can even just drive up in your car. So you don't need to be worried about whether or not you're going to be around a lot of other people. They'll come right up to your car to do the test. You can also go into the building to do the test. And I believe there's also testing located at the airport. So thank you to everybody that made that possible and please take advantage of it.
Thank you. And then Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just have one, uh, hats off tonight. And, uh, that's for our, the folks at Partnership Academy, which is a charter school, um, here, right here in Richfield. And I was talking to one of the parents and, um, and they have, uh, two children and, um, they're, they're native uh, eth- ethnically. And, uh, Partnership Academy is, um, very multicultural, but predominantly, um, Latino culture. And they were, they were painting a mural representing the, the, um, the, uh, the student body there. And as they transferred, they just reached out to those students and they asked what would be meaningful for them being part of, uh, the Ajibwe Nation. And they're able to include an eagle as a part of that mural that was representative of their culture. And I just, I thought it was such a beautiful picture of folks just taking the time to recognize as they were doing something that represented everybody. They did something that they, they just made a very intentional effort even for new students to make sure that it represented everybody. And I know it just meant the world to those students. Yeah, I think it's, uh, it's a small thing, but it just reflects a culture and a spirit that, um, they, they seem to be perpetuating there. And so I just want to lift them up and we're glad they're a part of our community and, uh, keep up the good work, uh, Partnership Academy.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Chapman. I had a chance to speak to their third graders a couple weeks ago and it was so awesome. They ask great questions. They have, um, awesome ideas. I, I really do think sometimes that, uh, one of the best parts of my job is to get to talk to the students and, and listen to them, not talk to them, but listen to their awesome ideas and encourage their leadership. I'll just say for my item that I just, on the one-year anniversary of the pandemic, um, thank you again to all of our essential workers, to our folks working in healthcare and all the things that make our lives, um, you know, go round and, and function on a day-to-day basis. And that people have just again been overcoming so many barriers. Um, whether it's having to pivot quickly and how we deliver our services. Um, you know, getting cuts and losses in our jobs and our hours, possibly in our pay. Um, having the whole family together in the household and having to be teachers and maybe work more. And just all of the added stress, including, um, I'm, I'm pretty sure that every single person now has a family member or if not a close friend that they've either lost or has been affected by COVID. Um, and just to thank everyone, including our city staff, um, but also all of our residents who have been doing so much to take care of our community. And I really hope that there's some light at the end of the tunnel here as we continue to, um, vaccinate folks. And again, just thank you to everyone and, and all that they've been contributing to keep us together during this time. All right, well, seeing as we have no other business, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.